You know, I was gonna say, you've had a loss of the community. It's been a long time. A little trampled, eh? I know somebody that does it.
And if you saw it, you probably know. It was me and Keston, and his floor is right after this.
Are they today?
Yeah, morning is, it's tonight.
Oh, okay.
And so, belonged to our church, so I had to stir in the pot a little bit.
They didn't know her person, but I knew some of the kids and things. The Walsh, James Walsh, from the school.
Uh-huh. So, and I bought stuff and took my there like.
Says Grandma, I thought it was all his wives.
It is. The wives.
Not the wife's mother.
Right. Let's give up.
Yeah, I went to school.
This right here, uh, yesterday, I talked to a lot of contractors, architects, and I'd like to put these out there.
And. For some professional services.
I don't want to touch it, I know I have to. Well, we need to.
If you've got a contract here, I'd like to be there.
And I got.
Okay, everybody ready?
She's, she's, uh-oh. They, uh, did that hip surgery. Had to replace.
Uh-huh. She thought it was.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education November meeting. Thank you, guys, for being here, uh, early afternoon. We hope to, uh, get finished in time for everyone to be at City Council tonight for us to say, I think the band's being recognized, so a lot of us are gonna wanna be there. And, uh, nice to see our runners here, uh, so welcome. I'd like to also thank, uh, Mr. Go-Forth for coming to our meeting this evening, and for Councilman Chester, I think I saw him in the back. As always, glad you're here. Uh, Tom, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Alexander if he would to lead us in the pledge of the flag in a moment of silence.
Please stand. As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask you to think about the Cooter Day family, uh, the recent passing of Miss Bay Lou Day, a true cyclone. Also, we had, uh, Ms. Catherine Armstrong, uh, one of our board members who is currently recovering from surgery that she had today. Uh, please pause for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, Mr. Wood, if you and company will come forward to be recognized, and Mrs. Brewer is gonna present you with the plaque.
I'm gonna do this. Oh, wow. This is great. Uh, this reads, "In appreciation, Aaron Wood, for placing first out of 6,500 runners in the Tri-City Susan Coleman Race for a Cure on October 20th, 2013." Uh, that's impressive. I would tell Mr. Alexander, the only way that I could do that is if they gave me a day's head start or let me drive my car. Uh, I'm happy to see that you're supported by, uh, members, uh, your student runners, and that's wonderful. So, on behalf of us, congratulations. Let me put this down.
If you two jump in the middle of this group, please, and Mr. Davis and Mr. Trent are gonna take pictures.
We'd like to, uh, just send our best wishes to Mrs. Armstrong. I think that, uh, Mrs. Perkins was left a note Tuesday that, uh, she wasn't gonna be here, so, uh, we just send her our best wishes and hope for a speedy recovery for her. Time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Do you know? It's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any questions, comments?
Yes. Items 12 and 13, I would like to have them removed because I feel that those items need to be put out to be.
Well.
Especially for that, those sums of, uh, money. So, I'd like to hold off on that to the next meeting, to where other people can make a bid on it.
That's professional services, and I would prefer to keep them on there because that falls under a different, um, venue than just typically bidding. So, I'd like to leave them on there, and, uh, we can talk about it when we get to it. So. Ms. Armstrong, and Ms. Perkins, we two, how do we need to address this? We just call a roll if we want to, uh, have them removed?
Yes, you could do that.
Okay.
Um, if Mrs. Baker is making that, uh, in the form of a motion to do that.
Oh, that's true. We have a second. Need a second. So, are you making motion to have those two items removed?
Yes, I'd like to make that a motion.
Okay. Can we get a second to have those two items removed? Okay. Hearing none, they stay. Is there anything else? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Think, uh, it is a three-one. Uh, Mr. Alexander, it's time for your portion of the board meeting.
As has been mentioned, of course, at the City Council meeting, the senior band members will be mentioned and called and addressed and recognized, uh, for winning the state championship and, and band competition in their category, and we're thankful about that. Uh, I would like to also acknowledge that our, our football team won the championship, uh, in their area and their competition, and will be competing, of course, tomorrow night in Greenville, uh, against an undefeated team. Uh, and it will be cold, so you better be ready. So, anyway, we think that we'll stay on the field with them. But, uh, with that in mind, we'll move on to the personnel update, uh, for resignations, and some of this information is on more than one page, so we'll maybe flipping back and forth a wee bit there. Uh, resignations, Jeff Nye, TA Duggar Wrestling Coach, effective 10/29. Nancy Greenlee, TA Duggar Instructional Interventionist, effective 12/18. Sandra Simley, TA Duggar Instructional Interventionist, effective 12/18. Seth Wellingford, ESP, substitute childcare worker, effective 10/22. And if you want to slide a little bit further, over to the other, uh, the third page there, Chelsea Francis, TA Duggar Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher and ESP Assistant Site Coordinator, effective 12/2. Uh, we're back to leave of absence. Cheryl Pitts, Westside Guidance Counselor, from 10/7 to 12/1. Regina Wilder, Director of CSH, Intermittent FMLA, leave from 10/25 through 6/9/14. Natalie Woodward, Herr McQuomick Teacher, from 11/2/13 through 11/18/13. Natasha Seepert, Eastside Assistant Teacher, from 11/11/13 to 11/29/13. Joy Jarrett, EHS Teacher, from 11/25 to 1/3/14. Regina Johnson, EHS Teacher, from 12/12 to 1/10/13. Elizabeth Pettit, Eastside Teacher, from 11/4/13 to 1/2/14. Meg Foster, if we can shift a little bit there, please, to the, uh, third page there. Kelly Clemmons, Bowling, EHS Math Teacher, from 12/2/13 to 5/26/14. Now, back to, uh, substitute Cook. Sherri West, Effective 9/5/13. Misty Taylor, Effective 10/21/13. Marilyn, correction, Mary Carolyn Tap, Effective 11/4. And then, on the second page, Lucille Gardner, Effective 11/12/13. Now, also, we have, uh, under leave of absence, Melanie Hartley, EHS Guidance Counselor, from 11/26 to 12/6/13. And finally, under new hires, Seth Wellingford, Interim Music Teacher at Eastside, Effective 11/11. Uh, Ginger Holdren, Interim Math Teacher at EHS, Effective 12/2. Uh, Ms. Davis, in a momento. I do not have that. Okay. Denise Davis, this is also on leave of absence, Westside Teacher, from 1/24 to 3/28/14. Thank you.
All right. And now, time for, uh, other reports. Um, Ms. Baker, you want to go first and talk about the convention?
Yes, the convention was excellent. We, uh, had some very interesting meetings, and, of course, usually they overlap, but this time they didn't, so it was a hard decision deciding which ones we wanted to go to. Uh, the speakers, the main speakers were excellent, and, of course, um, just in talking with the other people from other boards, you learn quite a bit. So, again, I'm very pleased to attend, and don't worry, board members, I did bring some stuff back for us.
Uh, well, um, myself, um, Mrs. Baker and Ms. Perkins, we attended the Tennessee School Board Association's annual meeting in Nashville. Uh, I agree with, uh, Mrs. Baker, it was a wonderful weekend. Great speakers, made me cry. Um, one of the highlights was Veterans Day. Uh, we had, uh, a military band there to perform and to, uh, start the, uh, day, and it was really very meaningful. Um, and the whole, talked a lot about military kids and working with them and, and having some support for them within the school system, so that was, was really interesting. I enjoyed it, and, uh, um, thank you all for letting us go. Anybody else? Any reports? All right. Let's move on to the regular agenda. First item on the floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 3.203 dash Crisis Management. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
This, of course, will complement and be added to next Wednesday's meeting, uh, principal's meeting, and, uh, under circumstances, it, it is, uh, consistent with our system plan, which, uh, is in the hands of, of course, Charlotte Taylor, individuals, the police and fire chiefs, and, and, uh, we, we feel that, uh, we're ready, uh, the circumstances, uh, the pre-website meetings, uh, for, uh, active shooter and things of this nature have already been conducted. All of this, all of this has been documented, and, uh, we all know the reason why this crisis management has been established, and, uh, we're only hopeful and that we are ready and can deal with any bizarre behaviors that, uh, we have seen throughout the nation and the world recently. So, I would appreciate if you could do this more addition.
Anybody having questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 3.203 dash Crisis Management. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, approve award of bid number ECSS FY 2013-2014-03 for the purchase of one 66-passenger school bus with air conditioning and seatbelts to Mid-South South, Mid-South Bus Center in the amount of $94,478. Can I get a motion to approve?
Salute.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And in circumstances, Mr. Hutchins, you have the microphone, so you can take it away there. There's a little disparity in cost here, a very small amount. He's gonna explain what his recommendation is and why.
The, um, the bus in question is, is, we're, we're asking to purchase it because we've seen an increase in the number of special ed students that we need to transport, and we actually had to start another route, uh, after the beginning of the school year. We do not believe it's necessary to have another bus with a lift. We have two buses with lifts, and, and, uh, they're more than able to take care of the number of students that we have, but we do have other students, uh, that, uh, maybe, maybe have, uh, behavior issues that we have to put on a separate bus. Uh, we're purchasing this out of GP, and, uh, the reason we're asking you to buy the bus that's $10 more, uh, is listed on the sheet that was in the board packet. Uh, we talked with the mechanic, Mr. Lindberg, and, uh, after we purchased our last Bluebird bus, we had numerous issues with it, uh, within the first three or four weeks of school. The, uh, bus, the door, uh, that the students enter and exit off the bus almost fell off the hinges. Um, we also have some other, uh, issues with some of the comparables that they have listed. Um, we asked that the, uh, bid prices be good for 120 days because we plan to come back to the board in January and order another bus with monies from next year's, uh, budget, and, uh, their response was, or noted otherwise. Um, you know, we, we, we have that assurance from the other two companies that, that bid, uh, in the process. Um, we don't want to, to slap these people across the face. They, they, uh, have been good to us in the past. Um, we have a number of Bluebird buses currently in service, but the last several buses that we purchased were Thomas buses, and if you talk to the drivers or if you talk to the mechanic, they will tell you to a man that they are a better-built bus. And so, that's why we ask you to purchase, uh, the bus that's $10 more. We did check with our auditor, um, and we checked with the board attorney, and our auditor said that we needed to keep documentation, you know, of why we, uh, feel like it's a better bus, or of the issues that we've had, and I can assure you that Mr. Lindberg has a file that's already getting fairly thick from the last Bluebird that we purchased. But, uh, in, under bids and quotations, it doesn't say that, it doesn't preclude us from purchasing the better product, and in talking with the board attorney, uh, they told us, uh, that there is nothing in law that precludes us from doing that, and if the board would want to add the term, um, lowest and best, they could do that at your discretion. So, that's why we're asking that you purchase this bus.
Uh, one, one thing I think is good, and this is why we asked to see the bids, because we want the best. It's not necessarily the cheapest, but we want the best item that's available, so thank you.
Mr. Hutchins, is this replacing a bus or are we adding a new bus?
Well, we started a new route, and we had a small, uh, 24 or 26-passenger bus, uh, that was not being utilized, so that bus actually goes out of service in July. And so, we're using it until, it'll take six months, irregardless of whether we order, where we order it from, it'll take six months to get it. So, uh, we'll utilize that bus for that particular route. It is a new route, but we do have an old bus.
Anything else? Okay. Item on the floor is approve award of bid number ECSS FY 2013-2014-03 for the purchase of one 66-passenger school bus with air conditioning and seatbelts to Mid-South Bus Center in the amount of $94,478. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is approve board resolution authorizing participation in the National Purchasing Cooperative or Best Buy, or Board, wow, you can tell it's Christmas, Buy Board through TSBA. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This, of course, is a purchasing cooperative and, uh, that is recommended by TSBA, and I probably would ask, uh, Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Van Hes to respond to the questions because it has been thoroughly vetted by Mrs. Owen, uh, through our Memphis attorney. So, with that in mind, if you have questions specifically about that, again, TSBA is firmly behind that and, uh, believe that, that we ought to recommend, that they're recommending that we do it. So, with that in mind, there's been some information attached to go along with that. But if you have any questions, they're ready to go.
Uh, one, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, one of the things, too, uh, Ms. Brewer and I both attended this, uh, Buy Board, but this is what I called, in order, in order to get those other bids on the other item that we had at the last meeting. So, I strongly believe in this, and they will give you at least three or more places of contact for bids. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Bennett, at the regional meeting, talked about, uh, Buy Board, and then, uh, Ms. Baker's correct, I sat through the workshop. It was really good. I thought that it was a good idea to familiarize myself with them, and basically, it is a, as he called it, it is another tool in our tool belt for purchasing. It's something that could make everybody's lives a little easier. It's a lot like shopping on Amazon. Uh, so, it's something that we can look into. If, if it works better for us, great. If not, great. Um, they're kind of, uh, new into Tennessee, and they're hoping to get, uh, some of our local vendors that we do business with to join in, uh, Buy Board. Uh, it was never intended, uh, to take away from local business. Uh, he was saying it was actually established to help local businesses, and, uh, it gives, um, basically, we had to tap into national buying power, which is great for us, and for any local vendors who wanted to participate, it gives them the opportunity to grow their business, so, uh, it's a kind of a win-win situation.
Is there a fee or an annual fee for being part of this organization?
No. No. It doesn't cost us anything.
And, like I said, I was very pleased because it did use our local person here as well as other places. Well, I like that, and it doesn't keep you from, you know, still looking on your own.
Okay. Anything else? I'm gonna attempt to read correctly this time. Item on the floor is to approve board resolution authorizing participation in the National Purchasing Cooperative Buy Board through TSBA. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is approve National Purchasing Cooperative Interlocal Participation Agreement through Buy Board through TSBA. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This, more or less, is the same response and the same recommendation I would make. Uh, this agreement may be terminated by the cooperative member at any time by 30 days' prior written notice, and just some guidelines and requirements.
That was kind, something that they talked about, this is just something, and it basically, this is a protection for us. That's what this is for. Anything? Anybody? All right. Item on the floor is to approve National, National Purchasing Cooperative Interlocal Participation Agreement Buy Board through TSBA. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is approve, a ratify approval of original memorandum of understanding between ETSU STEM Innovative Hub and the Elizabethan City School System, beginning 9/2013 and ending 9/15/18. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This is a additional, uh, five-year agreement with, uh, actually, it was begun by Dr. Roden. Uh, most of y'all know the gentleman who's been in the ETSU Science Department for 54 years. I think he's getting ready to retire. But anyway, they secured, uh, 500 million, actually, locally, $15.7 million from Race to the Top Monies, uh, to establish, uh, a, uh, hub, were part of a hub, but one of the six schools that they have is in Kingsport. You might well have read about that in Sullivan County. But anyway, with that in mind, uh, there is no cost to this. It's mostly professional development and, uh, grants that it, it promotes, and it's obviously STEM is a science, technology, engineering, and math innovation. So, it's a focus on those. Recently, it reminds me, I don't think there's anybody old enough in here remember the Sputnik of 1957, and the emphasis on math and science, which we have seen a resurgence of recently, but this is a promotion of science and math, uh, as it relates to technology as well. So, under those circumstances, the price is right, there's no cost, uh, on this, but it's also a help and support through ETSU and, and that area. So, under those circumstances, it's a, it's a five-year, actually, what you're doing is ratifying, uh, my signature on this, but I, I don't think anyone would have a disagreement with our being a, a part of that.
Do they have any questions? Item on the floor, ratify approval of original memorandum of understanding between ETSU STEM Innovative, Innovation Hub and the Elizabethan City School System, beginning 9/2013 and ending 9/15/18. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Move over into the additional part of the agenda. Next item is approve contract between Thomas Wiens Architect and the Elizabethan City Schools for the new athletic complex for Elizabethan High School. TWA Project Number 011-012. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
At this point, uh, I think that, uh, Ms. Baker had some questions about that, and, uh, uh, bless Mr. Wiens' heart, we've been five and six years in this, in this process, and this is a contract with him in reference to a professional service, and that is also for item 13. So, under the circumstances, you're just choosing him to move forward with the projects that, that were discussed in the last board, actually, in the call board meeting. Ms. Baker, do you want to ask any questions of Mr. Wiens that relate to that?
No, it's just that I feel that in attending our workshop last week, there was a large number of various architects and builders, and in doing so, they said they would be happy to give, uh, free information and look over whatever we needed without a fee, and also, they stated that in their proposals, that they would build in, what the prices would build in, and they did not go over that. Either they, um, stayed within the budget, something went outside the budget, they did not come back and ask for more money. And that's another reason that I wanted to have some other opinions. It would be their loss, not ours, but, like I said, there's four of us here, and, like I said, I wanted to at least hold off and have some others to give me a talk.
Ms. Van Hes, do you want to address this? Do you feel that it's necessary at this point? I, I think, I would recommend we move forward with this. We, we have carried too long on this, and, and, uh, if we get any, we have any more hesitation on this, uh, it may stymie our projects, and I, I want us to move on, because the town is watching, and.
Well, I would, I would just like to make a few comments real quick, and I would just like to thank Mr. Wiens for being patient with us in all the questions that we've asked of him to provide for us, to get us to this point. Um, I see no reason to delay any longer simply for the fact that, looking at, at, at the calendar and the way that this is laid out for the next year, if we wait any longer, you know, we've gotta get somebody that's going, so next summer, we're not, I guess we don't want all this construction, we don't want all the kids who are in school. This will help us get everything together, so then in the spring, the bids are out there, and we're starting to review the bids and hopefully start construction, right as school is ending, that'll give us two or three really good months without having any kids in, on the campus where we can actually get some stuff done and be prepared for when the kids do start back to school. And with the schedule that he's given us, you know, both of these projects, if all goes well, can be completed hopefully in the summer of 2015, and I think, um, you know, it'd be wonderful if we can stay with that schedule and go ahead and move, move forward with this.
Well, it's not to say that the others that could give opinions would not also fit within that schedule or may beat that schedule, but I'm just saying that we shouldn't go with just one, that we should always have at least three.
Anybody else? Item on the floor, approve contract between Thomas Wiens Architects and Elizabethan City Schools for the new athletic complex for Elizabethan High School. TWA Project. TWA Project 011-012. Ms. Perkins, would you call a roll?
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Isaacs?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Brewer?
Yes. Item passes. Next item. Approved contract between Thomas Wiens Architects and Elizabethan City Schools for the addition and alterations to the band and music classrooms at Elizabethan High School. TWA Project 011-014. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Obviously, we're just changing focus on the same campus to the, to the band and music classrooms. And we're excited about this as we are the athletic complex, as we are about the TA Duggar renovation addition.
We are to call this music room. Is that what I'm correct, that Mr. Elliott insists?
Not to nominate Mrs. Googe or Mr. Elliott.
There again, if all goes well, then these projects will be completed within just a few months of each other. So I think it's great that we're able to do both of these projects pretty much at the same time. So not really putting one in front of the other. I think it's wonderful that we're able to try to complete these, you know, just in a couple of months of each other. So I'm anxious to see us move forward.
The only thing I'm saying is we should still have other opinions. And regardless of what you do, even if it's your home, and you're doing things, you want the best and the most reasonable price. And we're not doing that. And that's part of our jobs to do that as board members.
I think we are kind of doing that, in that we've been working with Mr. Wiens for some time. And he has the clearest understanding of the scope of project. And in order for us to get anybody else in at this point, bring them up to speed, we would be expending a lot of time, which is money. And money, which is, I can't imagine they're going to give us work for free. And maybe I am naive to that, but I think that's what they'll tell us, to want to come and be seen and get their, get before us. But I really expect it would only delay the projects. And at this point, delay of a project to this scope or this nature can result in significant costs. And looking back at the bids and quotations, the policy does not, does not apply to professional services. That applies to purchases and the actual development of the stadium or the music room or the TA Duggar addition. Those are tangible projects that we'll have to put out to bid. The professional services agreement can be, and the language here allows us, you know, to look and get second opinions if we want to. But I think we'll be pleased with our services, or we would have already been working with others to this point. I think it would be wrong to work to this point with someone who's worked in good faith towards this and not let them continue forward. I would have a very difficult time as a board to utilize someone's free services to this point, which have been extensive and appreciated. But if we don't like what the drawings come back and we see that we've got some issues, we're in a planning phase. We're not at a going-out-to-bids phase yet. So I don't want to, I'd agree with you about getting the bids and quotations and getting three and finding the best price. But I think that that's in policy decided for the actual building project, not, not the professional service component of that project. And that's all we're talking about, as I understand it.
It's just that I'm saying that we've, he has done the work, and he's done a good job. But I'm just saying, even so, you still want to look for the best, just as Mr. Hutcherson done with his bus, his bus, which I appreciate. And I'm just saying, it's nothing wrong with doing what's right.
Item on the floor, approved contract between Thomas Wiens Architects and Elizabethan City Schools for the addition and alterations to the band and music classrooms at Elizabethan High School. TWA Project 011-014. Ms. Perkins, would you call a roll?
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Isaacs?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Brewer?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, December 17, 2013, 6:30 at the MacPierce Board Room. Also, the next part of our policy revision schedule will include policies wherever we are next, three or four.
What we're going to do next month is ask the board members to look back at what we have adopted since July. And if they feel that those policies need a second look, we would review those decisions, see if they're being effective.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you all.